Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Flagler County Planning and Boarding Development of November 14th, 2023. Madam Clerk, can we please have a roll call?
Michael Boyd.
Here.
Timothy Connor. Jack Corbett.
Here.
Heather Haywood.
Here.
Mark Langello asked to be excused.
He just walked in.
Really?
I'll leave.
All right. All right. And then Anthony Lombardo.
Here.
And Fernando Melendez is asked to be excused.
Will everyone please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
The Planning and Development Board observes rules established by case in law and by board policy for the conduct of all of these public hearings. The audience should refrain from clapping, booing, shouts of approval and/or denial and disagreement. I avoid, to avoid potential legal ramification and possible overturning of a decision by the court, a public hearing must be fair in three aspects. That is form, substance, and appearance. We will observe the following time limits. Staff will have 10 minutes for their presentation. The applicant has 15 minutes. Public comments will be limited to three minutes and extended to five if you are speaking on behalf of a group. And 10 minutes, 10 minutes each will be provided to the applicant for any rebuttal comments and to staff for any closing comments. First application for our agenda this evening is application 3391, which was continued from our October 10th meeting. It is a quasi judicial recurring, requiring disclosure of ex parte communication. Does anybody have anything?
Hang on Gina.
Oh, the minutes, I'm sorry. Yes, the minutes. Item number three, approval of October 10th, 2023 regular meeting minutes.
I think a motion, we approve the minutes.
Second.
Now we'll go back to.
All in favor.
Oh, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All in disapproval. You guys have it. Right, number four. Variance from the continued from October 10th. 3391. Anybody have anything else to add to what you do or don't need to disclose? Staff?
Doing things a little, we just make it harder, don't we? Looking for the staff report on this one. And so that, we did have some correspondence that went back and forth. You probably saw it over the last few days after the publishing of the agenda. And so I'm looking through here to see what I can provide to you with that. Looks like the staff report did not make it in the agenda. And so what we, what we had had was the same staff report, but then you had the addition of the HOA review letter that had come talking about their objections. And then in the time since then, you had a schematic that I believe shows an eight-foot rear setback. And then mentioned from the HOA that that would work with them along with a decrease in the amount of the pavers that Ms. Bukarski had, had come back and offered. And then that, that would then meet the HOA's requirements. So it would be a reduced variance, as I understand it, down to a two-foot rear. I'll look to the applicant to confirm that. And then the other request from the HOA was that if, if this is ultimately approved by the Planning and Development Board, that the variance be required to provide a as-built as a, as a demonstration of the completion to meet the conditions. And that's something we need for our permit also. But that as-built survey demonstrating that it, it meets the minimum rear setback that, that the variance is, is provided for. With that, I'll close. Wait any questions or comments? I think we'll both, all of us will benefit from the presentation from the applicant.
All right, thank you.
Madam Chairman.
Oh, does it do any of us have questions for our staff?
Yeah, I was confused as to what the plan was. I saw a lot of stuff going back and forth. Do we have a definitive drawing that shows what this is?
One failing here, and I was going to try to get into my email. I don't have.
I mean, I mean, literally, it's hard to approve or disapprove of something. But all these emails that went through before and after the agenda.
Do you have that copy with you? Okay, can we, if I'm asking.
Put it on the viewer and then.
To come forward, if you can put that on the, on the display. Just the, that, yes. And then, and you may have to bend the head down just a little bit to make it, that'll work. And if you don't mind, so we can catch your comments, move over to the podium to speak into the microphone.
Not on ours.
So.
Our screens.
Just slide over just a little bit more. You'll need to speak into the microphone.
After going back.
Carlos, can you put, there you go, thank you. Thanks, Carlos. Can she turn it now?
And so what, what that's showing then is at the, at the top of the drawing is north. Right side's going to be east, left side's west, and then the, the roadway is to the south off of the drawing. So it's just the portion of the backyard. And this is consistent, I'll say for the record, with what you had sent previously. The only difference is the, the last email I sent out, I think was on Monday, was a color portion of this. Bukarski, if you could introduce, provide your name and address for the record.
My name is Alina Bukarski, and this property is located at 50 Moana Court South, Palm Coast, Florida 32137.
Do you have anything that you want to add with the new drawings and just kind of re?
So basically, association said that they would be open to this particular placement, which would only require a two-foot variance. And also, they wanted less amount of pavers. So we took the pavers out from the side and the back. And in order to make better impervious, I'm always confused, was that word coverage? We're going to remove the actual concrete, which you guys approved when the house was built, and we're going to replace it with pavers. So that way, there's more water penetration, I guess, that's.
So all of the, all of the concrete pad is going to go away?
Which, I mean, it doesn't have to, but I think it's going to be better for
It looks better.
And it looks better.
It looks better.
So what we see there, the hot tub spot concrete, but that's going to be pavers now? Correct?
No, under the pad is concrete. Yeah, it cannot sit on the pavers.
But that pad already was closer to the backyard. You're cutting off part of that pad?
Yes, we're going to cut off two foot of it.
And then you're going to add two feet to the other side?
Yes. That's what the association said would work for them. That way, it sits further from the property line by two feet. So basically, essentially, what's going to happen is we're going to add to the side and to the front, and we're going to move it. So it's going to go a little bit to the side and a little bit towards the house.
I don't have last months with me. I thought that the side setback was seven and a half feet.
No, it's five.
It's five, okay.
So it's going to be right at five feet on the side.
Okay. Any more?
I'm just kind of catching up here. Is this an after the fact?
Yeah.
But you weren't here last month.
Anthony came to us with a, he was much closer to the backyard.
Okay.
We were, we were asking for a bigger variance, and we were trying to figure out how to also add some aesthetics for the applicant. As a continuance, she also had not been in touch with the HOA at that time. They wanted, they were nervous of an easement at a rate two on the property.
And now going through the, seeing the emails from today, the association's okay with what we see here?
Correct. They don't have a formal approval, but they, I have an email from them stating that this is going to be acceptable.
Yep, and he had emailed into that.
And Anthony, we discussed last time, HOA approvals are not necessarily our purview, but it's good to know what they think is just as another input.
Right, yeah.
I just ask you guys, the planning board, to approve possible, so we can move on with our lives and put this matter behind us and get it all fixed up.
Would have been easier to get that permit in advance.
So the salesperson, I mean, I know, it sounds really stupid because I'm a real estate agent. I should know about this stuff. But literally, the salesperson over there told me it's a, it's a spa. You don't really need to get it approved. I mean.
And we should be able to trust that, right?
We should, yeah. I should have known better than that.
Are you an agent or a broker?
Broker.
Okay.
If there's no further questions or comments for the applicant, we can move to public comment. Public comment is open at this time in regard to application 3391. No further public comment. Back to the board, do we have anything additional for staff? Staff, do you have anything?
Only item would be, and it does seem like we've come to agreement, if, if you do have a, an approval on this, including your approval, the need to have the as-built meeting, the, showing the eight-foot, provide it to staff.
Yeah, I, I will make the motion, but I think we also need to reiterate the tree ordinance needs to be followed. I know they showed it on here finally. But I would make a motion to approve the variance with this eight-foot setback to the rear contingent upon a as-built to be turned into the county and the tree ordinance to be complied with.
I'll second it.
Absolutely. Put the tree in there and we'll do the as-built survey if you need it, no problem.
Okay, so motion made, made by Mr. Langello, seconded, and it was seconded?
I second it.
All those ready to vote in favor, say aye.
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 All those not, say nay. The ayes have it, four to zero, motion carries.
Thank you so much. Thank you, and sorry about the, all the emails back.
Okay, next application is quasi judicial. Anybody have any expertise communication to disclose?
Carlos? Get that back on the screen, please.
No expectations to disclose, is staff ready to proceed with their presentation?
Yeah, we are. This is project number 2023090011. A bit of a mouthful there. This is a variance at 10 Dawson Drive to reduce the 25-foot front minimum setback in the R1 district down to zero. This is, purpose of this was a carport. Carport has been installed. This is an after the fact variance request. Here's the aerial of the property showing the, the existing home. And then the, the carports in, in front of that to the, to the east, to the front. We had reviewed this at TRC. The applicant satisfactorily addressed our, our comments, providing the, the narrative of the purpose of the carport was to protect vehicles, boats, those kinds of things that you have. And you can see from the aerial, it's a heavily treed lot. And so that's part of what the, the applicant was seeking there. And that also, the applicant has provided that there's really no other location because of the septic being on the property, no other opportunity for them to be able to provide that protection on their lot other than in its present location. We did make note of the, of the 25-foot reducing down that front setback down to zero. That's pretty extreme for us, but you know, also realizing that there's, there's not a lot of room in the front with the home existing as it was. Typically, your setbacks are involved for future widening, some consideration like that, and the Dawson's not going to be widened, maybe improved in the future, but would not be subject to any, any widening because of it being a residential street. So I wanted to leave all those facts for you and think we covered it pretty well in our technical staff report, but have those three options available for the board. Approval after a finding that all the variance criteria have been met. Or denial, finding that the one or more of the criteria have not been met. And then continuance for either us or the applicant to be able to provide additional information back to the, to the board. With that, I'll close, wait any questions or comments? Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, Adam. Do any board members have any questions or comments for staff? Adam, I just have one question, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Going back to the visual, we're talking, it, you turn into the carport.
Correct, yes, ma'am.
Okay. We don't have any questions from the board? Is the applicant here and would they like to, okay? Come up, please.
Have any photos of this, do we?
I've got the plan coming up here in just a moment, since I get done scrolling.
Hi, state your name and your address in the microphone.
Robert Robertson, 10 Dawson Drive.
Tell us a little bit about your property.
So basically, we're, we're in the unincorporated Palm Coast, so we're on a dirt road. So I made the mistake of getting in the carport thinking I didn't need a permit for it. So basically, we constructed it according to the length of the driveway. So you can see, I can't go closer to the house with it. So we went to the end of the driveway. Before I realized there was a 25-foot setback. So basically, I spent $6,000 on this carport. So I'm in the doghouse with my wife now. So basically, I measured in between the driveway and the road, I have 25 feet from the end of my property line to the edge of the road. So basically, you could park two fire trucks in front of my driveway and the road still wouldn't be blocked, side by side. Also, the fire hydrant's on the other side of the road. It's 80 feet from the property line. Also, the electrical pole is, electrical pole is 34 feet from the variance line, septic tank is 17 feet, and the water utility is 20 feet from, from the variance area.
Members, do you have any questions for the applicant? Do you?
I do, can you believe it? Can you tell me how far away your, your carport is from your house? I wish we had some pictures of it.
Yes, it is, it's 10 feet from the house right now.
10 feet?
10 feet.
Adam, do we know, do we have that information?
Let me, let me ask, so that if I'm seeing this dimension right here, it's 31, is that correct?
So the 31.
It, not this dimension, that can't, can't be 13, I don't think.
I think it's 21.7.
So I got 20.9, 21. So that can't be 13. This is 13-1 on this dimension. This is a covered entry.
Yeah, so basically, on the, on the south side of the carport, it's, it's about six inches from the house.
Okay.
On the.
What is the material that you built the carport out of?
It's a Versatube. Versatube, it's, I believe it's stainless.
What is the roof structure of that?
The roof is sheet metal.
Underneath?
Uh, so there's nothing underneath. Well, it's got gables, it's got stainless gables, and then it's just sheet metal.
There's not a wooden frame to this thing.
No wood at all.
Honestly, I wish I could see this, Adam. We have a structure built extremely close to a house. I don't know if our fire code has looked at this situation or not. We looked at it in regards to that?
I think from being described, it's not combustible, so is that right?
Right, but we don't have any information to that effect.
Understood.
I have the spec sheet right here for the cardboard.
It's one of those, one of those.
Yeah, Versatube. So basically, it comes with no instructions. You just put it together like you think it goes, basically. But yeah, it's all stainless. And actually, the fire, fire said, fire rescue has no issue with the variance, basically. What's, what's across the street from the property? Across the street, they're building a home right now, so from my property line to their house is 110 feet. So that, that's the closest property to the carport would be 110 feet.
Sound right, Adam?
See that, you said 100.
Actually have a picture of it right here.
You're talking about the home, right? Not the, not the, yeah, the actual.
From the edge of my driveway to the home across the street.
That makes, that, well.
Carlos, could you get that on the screen? Can you center that in the picture?
Yeah, would you pull that down just a little bit?
More?
A little bit more.
Keep going, keep going, man.
So to the edge of their dri, to the beginning of their driveway and from the end of yours?
Yeah, so that, right there where the picture ends is the end of my driveway.
If, if you can, I'm sorry, we're not picking this up. You're going to, if you can, just pull the, pull the camera, yeah, that'll work all right.
So.
That's all right, he's got it.
In the picture, that's the edge of my driveway. They don't have a driveway yet.
Right.
So it's 100 feet to their garage. And I think, I think actually their driveway is going to be on the front side. I think that's just going to be dirt or rock right there. Sure, though.
Oh, that's not the front, that's not the entrance of their driveway?
That's the rear, yeah. That's the rear of the house.
But that's their garage.
But that's the entrance.
That's the entrance to their garage, yeah. Sorry.
Do you have any pictures of yours?
Of the carport?
Yeah.
No, sir. Not printed out. On my phone, I do. It's, it's big. I mean, it's, it's 32 by 28, so it's, it's a large carport.
Can, can you put the phone on the projector with the pictures?
I take that back, I do not.
Do you have any other questions for the applicant?
Stand, stand by, Madam Chair, if you can. We've got, we're going to try something here. Trying to get you a picture.
So.
I think we've got something.
Question, Adam, the, I guess the person across the street who's doing a build, they were notified of this?
They were.
He loves it, he wants one. I agreed to help him build it by not showing up. So.
Funny, okay. And so it goes into, it's secured into the ground just with the gables?
So on the, on the south side, it's, it's concreted in with anchoring bolts. On the north side, it's got helical anchors that go into the earth. So this design is actually compatible with both, so.
I'm, I'm going to tell you my point of view. I know that you probably did not understand you had to get a permit. And these are lots of record, which are small. But the problem is, is that, that there's nothing at all unique about the property. And, and I usually am the one up here trying to find something unique, as my fellow board members know. And just giving you the variance, you know, just giving people variances because they did something they weren't supposed to do says, why doesn't everybody just do that? That's my old issue is that, you know, what is the, the circumstance here? You're talking about the trees, that's why people move out there in that area.
Right.
Park proximity to the beach and that hammock, that old hammock out there. And, and it's just so darn close to the street, it really is.
Yeah, I hear you. I, I looked at going to the right, but the electrical line is too low, so I can't go to the right and back with it.
Well, electrical lines could be buried, you know? You could do your whole electrical line under the house, under the, they can just bury it. It's like FPL charges a, a flat amount of X amount of dollars and you can have, which is better anyway for a hurricane, but that electrical line would be under the ground and be gone. If that was your only contingency, that's, that could be overcome.
Plan B.
Plan B.
So the, looking at this picture, your, your truck there in mail, I guess the mailbox is on your property, it's not on the street, right? And then your.
So the.
Truck, the front of your truck, would it be on the street in that situation? I'm just curious.
So from the, the driveway is the end of the property line. So it's 25 feet from the concrete to the street. So there's a easement of 25 feet in between my property line and the street, the edge of the street. So my mailbox is not on my property.
This thing is 20 feet large?
It's, um, it's 28 wide, 32 long.
So there's a 25-foot easement from the driveway to the street?
No, sir. 25 feet in.
Even on, if he's 28 feet, he's outside of his property line. Am I wrong?
So your truck in this photo is partially in the road?
Uh, no, ma'am. It's on the easement. So not on my property, but not on the road.
Got it.
So...
He's in the easement.
I'm still on my property, but basically, the, with the 25-foot setback, the carport has to start 25 feet into the driveway.
I think, I think if we replace the word easement with right-of-way, we're in good shape.
Yeah, he's in the right-of-way.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I, we don't even have the authority to grant him permission to be in the right-of-way.
No, no, and I...
No, no, just his truck is in this photo.
Right.
We were trying to gauge distance, so just his truck in this photo is in the right-of-way. Nothing structurally with his property is in the right-of-way.
That's right.
We don't have an accurate survey.
Well, we have, if, if, um, Carlos, you could toggle back to the screen. Got an, an accurate survey, but then with the hand-drawn carport added in. And, uh, and I think that if, if I'm looking at it right, the width is 33, the depth is 28. Is that right on the carport?
Um, opposite. So the, the width is 28 and the length is 32.
I, I guess I, I got a little bit of...
33.
Guess I got a little bit of a problem because what you just showed us on the, or what we had on the photo, doesn't match what you're showing there because this would show the left-hand side being, using the augers in the earth. And then the, it actually looks like both sides would end up, you don't have any of the base of this in concrete.
So the, the south side is on concrete and the north side is on the dirt.
So the, the, what you've shown is the carport is not correct on this. Is that right?
No, that's correct.
Then the survey is not correct because the concrete's not shown correctly. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
Maybe we got more concrete than what we thought we did.
Correct.
Yeah, I think there's a sticky wicket here. I think, first of all, we need accurate information. His drawing on this picture is not sufficing, especially the numbers he's telling us don't jive. And, um, there may be, like I said, a way for him to put it on the side anyway. But I, I, you know, at the very least, I mean, I'm more, I don't know how my fellow board members feel, but hate to keep putting these off to continuance, but continuance would a survey and, and options because I, again, there's, the justification of this is that, um, thought that he couldn't put it there because of FPL wires and he just went ahead and put it up. So what do you tell all the other people who come up, want to get that and come up to you and ask for one?
Well, there's also a very large oak right there as well, so I would have to chop the tree down, which I'm not...
There is a certain amount of trees you can't take down.
I'd rather not. I'd tear the carport down before I'd tear the tree down.
Let me ask you a question. The south side of your carport, does your, does your driveway drawn right? It's gotta be drawn right on this.
I, I don't think it was, um, it's not drawn right because the concrete comes out to the edge of the carport, so...
How far, on, on the north side of your driveway, how far does the carports extend over the concrete?
On the north side, um, I would say about a foot.
Oh, okay. So there's, so there's more concrete in front of your entryway than what's showing on here?
Correct.
Okay.
I, I think we should hear from the public, but then my own gut would be to ask for a continuance with accurate information and options.
There's nothing more that you'd like to say?
That's it.
Awesome. Thank you for coming up. We'll open up to public comment. Would anybody like to publicly comment on this application? Seeing as none, I will bring it back to the board. Do you have any other comments, questions for staff?
I mean, what I'm looking at here, I think it makes more sense to, to move it, move it further, further north and back. That would be my, my thought process on to get it off the road. But I'm with Mr. Langello. I just don't have enough information here to, the picture is, the picture that we were shown is kind of, it just doesn't really give me enough to make a definitive decision on, on this application.
Madam Chair, we've, we've got another photo. If Carlos can toggle back to the... This one's a little better.
Did you, could you nod any affirmative? Is the roof structure or is she attached now? Okay, thank you. It, he said it was not.
Well, this picture definitely helps.
And that's the tree that, uh...
Yeah.
Yeah. Unless another, if anybody else has any comments?
I, I, I just have a comment. I mean, um, I'd be inclined to, uh, approve it. Um, the neighbor doesn't seem to care. His house faces the other direction. I know we don't want people just building, um, into the setbacks for no reason, but the HOA there, it's unincorporated area. I don't, the neighbors aren't, nobody's here complaining. That'd be my take on it.
I have one more question for the applicant. What's wrong with the garage? You'd have to come up here to respond. I'm sorry. I apologize.
Uh, the garage is just full of stuff and I have nine vehicles registered in this county. I'm a small business owner. They're, they're not all parked there, but there's normally about five vehicles there.
Because you're a hoarder, you want me to take you to the variance?
No, I'm not a hoarder. I just, I have a lot of stuff.
Okay, okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, if nobody has any other comments, I, I again, would, I would like to, um, continue this item to, um, I guess, I guess maybe, I don't know if one month is gonna give him time to get a survey, but, Adam, should I say date certain or just leave it open because I know how hard it is to get surveys with the holiday season, but I, I think two things. One, we need to actually see what we're approving, the location, because I don't, honestly, the, the drawing that's there doesn't seem to jive with the math that he's describing. And two, that there may be other options for this on the, on the property. You know, dismantling this superstructure is not the end of the world. Um, he already has a car, concrete driveway that's there. So only talking about just maybe perhaps putting this in another place that might work. And, uh, options are better. And, um, you know, as the chair talked about, there is even a, um, a relief on the property. He has a, he has a garage. This thing was no further than the front of the house. It looks like that side it comes out, there would still be some parking. It, it looks like a lot of options here. That the option taken, that may not necessarily be the best one related to setbacks. And that would be my motion to continue it to, do you think date certain or just continue it?
Date certain would preserve notice and if, if anything, we could, um, report progress at the next meeting and, and, um, and continue it again if we need to. We cannot continue beyond two, two, uh, additional meetings. And so just for everyone's benefit...
The applicant, come forward? What I give you exercise today going back?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
What I'm asking you to do, and that we'll see if the, the rest of the board agree, is that you get this surveyed and determine where this stuff is and look at other options where this could be officially. Like I said, the electrical wire, you'll find it's not a big deal to, to bury that. Um, but you have to hire a professional, uh, surveyor to do this. And, um, to do that, I'm not sure you can get it done unless you get on it right away and you know somebody within one month. We could, we could date certain it for two months, which would take into next year, if that doesn't bother you.
Um, honestly, I'd rather just tear it down because I'm not gonna chop that tree down. You know, burying the FPL line is one thing, but then I have to remove the tree and it's kind of the whole reason I'm there.
Well, there's, you have other options too. You could make it not so big so it doesn't stick out as far.
I can't return it, so...
Are you able to, because like, so basically, we have, you have a six-car carport. Are you able to do less in length?
Um, I could, um, but I have, it's, it's about the boat as well. My boat's 24-foot long, so I really wanted to be able to cover the boat. So if I were to shorten it, I'd probably just tear it down as well, honestly. So and, and to the right, there's also the water utility. So, and to the left is the septic, so, and then that would bring it even further forward, so...
Well, again, I, I don't even see how we can approve it without accurate information as to where it is and how we'd do it. And that means he would need to get a survey. Um, and if he's unwilling to do that, I mean, that's your option. If you're unwilling to pay to get a survey to locate it and do all that, then, um, then I would retract my motion and just, uh, motion to deny.
Understood.
Hope we have any consensus.
So do you want to continue? Get a survey to help us out?
I can get a survey.
That'll tell us too what other options that you may, um, to help you out.
Okay.
I don't think he has much, many other options, just judging by, I'm, I'm looking at this now. I mean, it's pretty much, it didn't make, that's, you know, the location, what, that makes sense, but just have to see the, um, the survey to get a better idea.
Additional photos would...
Yeah, some good photos and, maybe some, uh, you know, if there's, if there's photos of the, I have a pretty good idea what it's gonna finish, but it'd be nice to see any good, um, you know, even if you have pictures of finished product from the manufacturer or something would help. But the survey is the most important part.
Madam Chair, if I could offer one, one item, uh, the survey would be needed as an ASBILD. And so one way or the other, you'd end up doing it because as part of the permit, you'd end up, maybe you wouldn't be out money. That would assume that, you ultimately get the variance, you're permitted, everything's good. You know, you're, you're, you'd need to do an ASBILD anyway, ASBILD survey, so it may not be useless spending, so...
Okay.
Okay, then I'll, I'll keep my motion for him to bring a, bring us a, we'll, we'll continue it. Two months give you a chance to get the thing done, so come back in January?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we continue it to date certain in, um, January meeting. And, um, he would bring a survey back and some more photographs and possibly other options if the board does not think that it fits where it is.
Yeah.
Motion made by Mr. Langello. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Do you know, see no further discussion? Are we ready to vote? All of those in favor, say, for the continuance, say aye.
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 Dis opposed, say nay. I think we've all agreed. Moving forward to number six, quasi-rudicial requiring disclosure, project 2023090036. Does anyone have?
No, ma'am.
Jeff, are you ready for your presentation?
Yes, ma'am. This is project number 2023090063 at 24 via Roma. Uh, this request is for an 8.4-foot front or east yard setback variance from the required minimum 25, uh, I got front in there again, from the required minimum on the side. I don't remember what it is now. I'll have to see it in the rest of the text. Here's the, the lot. It is irregular. It's, it's here at the end of this line of lots. You can see across the street that those are more square and, and, or rectangular in their format. And so this one, I already had that challenge from the beginning of having, uh, this irregular side with it. Let me go to the plan. Bear with me. Five. Guess not. And so here's what you see as, as far as the, uh, it is the front. And so we've, we've got the, um, a regular, uh, side here that they had to deal with. And what had been, what had happened was the surveyor had measured off of the edge of pavement and not the lot line when they did their submittal to us. And so what was, what was demonstrated to us was that it would meet a 25-foot front set, front setback. We had missed that in our review. Uh, so there are some developments here that are older and hammock dunes that do measure from edge of pavement. And so part of it is on, on staff. Uh, we realized this at the time of the final survey being sent to us, that it did not meet that 25-foot, uh, front setback, that in fact, that had been measured from the pavement edge, uh, and instead of being measured from the front property line. Uh, the house is complete. Uh, it has been given a temporary CO. I'll admit that for the record that we allowed the family to move in awaiting the, the variance. Uh, and, and so the options available now for the contractor are, are not real good because they did work under an approved permit, approved by, by staff, uh, in, in error. Uh, and that, uh, and that they did have a fairly unique situation here where it, it was a initial error by the, by the, the surveyor who came back and said, this is how it should be, and then, and was missed by us. And, um, and so we're, we're bringing forward then those options for the board. Um, approval, finding variance criteria have been met, that it is a unique situation because of the lot mainly, but also then because of, of the compounding of the errors that had happened with the front setback. Uh, the denial based on the criteria, uh, not being met, and those would, would be that, you know, this isn't an extraordinary situation, whatever the case may be, definitely was not an act of the owner. Uh, or I'd say, in this case, the contractor, it, it, both of them had acted all, all times in good faith. And then the final option would be a continuance for, hopefully to a time and date certain for additional information from us or from, uh, from the applicant. With that, I'll close. Wait any questions or comments? Thank you.
Board members, do we have any questions or comments for staff? Is the applicant present this evening? Hi. Put your name and your address into the microphone, please.
Uh, Don Cabral, the general contractor, DC Construction for 24 via Roma. So yeah, as was mentioned, it, it is a much smaller lot than normal, 17,000 square feet compared to, I think, over 20,000. We did, when it was laid out and was approved, we built off that permitted set of plans. I know as a contractor, you don't vary from those. And so having those, those permitted and stamped, we went with that. Right now, it would be a real hardship if, if we were to try and even come up with an option as to what we could do to gain that extra, uh, footage. We'd have to lop off the single-car garage on the left and probably the two-car garage would lose 10 feet. Uh, at this time, the HOA has told us they do not have any issues with the way it sits on the property. And because we do not have any, uh, a buildable property to the left, uh, if you were to start lining things up, it, you know, it may look out of balance then, but now it doesn't. It, it fits well within the community. So we're, we're hoping that, uh, because of the hardship and the, the, the odd size of the lot, that, uh, that variance would be granted.
Questions for...
Um, so I run, I'm, I'm very familiar with the lot and it's, um, it's definitely an odd-shaped lot. And ironically, I drove by this house maybe about a week or so ago, um, not knowing that this application was coming. It looks, it looks great. Um, didn't notice that it was closer to the road by eye, by driving by. Um, so that's just my, my personal comment on it that, that, uh, that I have. Just ironically, this application came up, so...
We have something, Adam, from the HOA that states that they're in agreement with this?
My assistant, she may.
Oh, okay. You just identify yourself by your name and your address and your title?
Valerie Talikson. Um, I work for Don for 24 via Roma. Um, from the HOA, we do not have anything in writing except for an email, um, stating that they really don't have any issues that we needed to take it up with Flagler County, so that's...
So are they not making you do, go through their normal? Okay, okay.
I have an email. It doesn't say like, it doesn't say anything other than just Flagler County, so...
Okay. If you, I'm sure you guys have staff's email. If you would forward that to staff, that'd be awesome. Mr. Langello?
Carlos, could you put that, that overall picture back up of the, uh, the lot and the neighborhood?
I'll be me.
Was that you, Adam?
Yeah, that's me.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with you, Anthony, just by looking at it, it's definitely an irregular-shaped lot. And, um, the road, the road...
And, um, the road, the road curves just past that. So it's not even a sightline thing, and that's not a buildable lot right next to it. Um, I mean, criteria one would definitely be met here. And, uh, no fault of their own, um, I doesn't seem to be in, 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 you know, impeding the neighborhood at all, it's, it's not, you know, an everyday situation, so. There's nothing to the south of that. Build it, was that like a, a conservation easement or something?
Yeah, it's, it's a green space, I think it's listed as a reserved parcel on the plat, and, um, there, there won't be anything there.
Okay. Questions or comments?
Thank you.
Do public comment, is there anyone who would like to comment on this application? And I bring it back to the board, do we have anything further for staff?
What was coming? Did you call?
He did it.
They all showed up and then left real quick.
It was a big crowd, but they all left.
Still.
Riot, really, uh.
Madam Chairman, I think due to all the circumstances that, uh, Adam mentioned about the county overlooking it and since of the lot and not going to create a problem for anybody else, I'll make a motion to approve the variance.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Buried. On to application, item number seven, project number two zero two three zero nine zero zero four eight. This is a quasi judicial requiring disclosure of expertise communication. Board members? Those? Awesome. Finish with that, is staff ready to proceed with their presentation?
Yes, ma'am. It's the, uh, agenda, item number seven on our agenda, thank you, Madam Chair, for reading that project number, so I don't have to. Here's the approximate location. Uh, this is one of, uh, three of, uh, the newer site development plan and development agreements we have. This one's for Brookside at Orman Station. And so, uh, this one, I'll cut right to the drawing on this, and so we have a review of the, uh, of the dimensional requirements in the packet. See, that's gonna be pretty far down, that, uh, here we go. And I'll need to rotate it. The site development plan consists of, about, was it half a dozen pages? A little bit more than that, about ten pages, and so we've got, uh, second page there showing the wetland impacts, uh, that are occurring within this, remembering uh, that, uh, the development, uh, within, uh, Hunter's Ridge uh, does have the, uh, wetland credits that are part of the conservation, uh, uh, assessment, that, the, the conservation lands that were given to the county. And so still, uh, arguably, there's a attempt to reduce those impacts, and, and I, I I think that each one of these we see shows that, that the larger wetland areas are still outside of the development footprint. Uh, this shows the, uh, lot layout, I think this had the layout then for each of the three different lot types is what you're seeing here. And so there are, uh, three separate, uh, uh, lots, lot types based on lot width. Then you have the, kind of a specific layout, uh, that follows, uh, with the layout showing, uh, a, a potential building footprint on each of those. And so that's on the remaining sheets, and then we should have within this also then, uh, the model sheet, I think is what we had. Utility layout on page nine, and then ten being your, uh, pers- perspective model with being used as a temporary sales center. So we want to make sure we have that in each of these site plans now, that you have that, uh, uh, from the, from the onset. With that, I'm gonna go back to the dimensional requirements from the agreement. We're trying to get some continuity here also with these, so that, uh, uh, these can be fairly standardized. But they will differ depending on lot width, the number of lots. Uh, those are all in play here with this, and so, uh, this one's gonna have the forty-eight, uh, hundred square foot minimum lot size, forty foot, uh, lot width as measured at the front setback, so that takes care of your pie shaped lots, your ones that are in regu- irregular, that don't have parallel side lot lines. Uh, street, uh, side yard setback, uh, for the forty foot's eleven, twelve and a half for fifty, sixty foot's are at fourteen feet. And then you've got sixty-five percent impervious lot coverage that's going on here with this. Uh, one thing to note, uh, kind of as a precursor for the other agreements that we have showing up, the amendments to, uh, Grove Side and Garden Side, uh, the, the lot coverage that snuck in with those as we had done those back in twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen, uh, consistent with our, our one D zoning as we were using that as the model at the time. Lot coverage, uh, isn't something that we've seen more often within, uh, the recent uh, iterations within Hunter's Ridge, and so lot coverage typically within our conventional zoning being limited to the area under roof. Uh, the, these agreements in Hunter's Ridge within, uh, the Orman Station portion have omitted that and, and instead relied only on the impervious coverage and and the board, uh, planning, planning board previously has recommended approval, Board of County Commissioners has approved those. And so you won't see lot coverage here in this or the, uh, remaining, uh, other two items that are the new site development plans that we have coming forward. With that, uh, I'll close and await any questions or comments from the board, but offering those three options that we have approval of the PUD Site Development Plan and Development Agreement for Brookside at Orman Station, or denial. Uh, if you can provide some recommendation, or some reasoning for the denial, a recommendation for denial to the Board of County Commissioners, should you deny this, make that recommendation for denial or continuance to a time and date certain. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thanks, Adam. Board members, do you have any questions or comments for staff at this time? Done with the applicant, is the applicant present?
Good evening, I'm Kimberly Buck with the Allen Engineering Group, representing the applicant. I'm really just here to answer any questions that you might have.
Langello?
Yeah, amazing, huh? I got several questions for you, Kim. Adam, could you go back to the last page you just had with the setbacks?
I was very excited to, to show you this one.
Well, I have, I'll-
The, the other thing I left out in my presentation, I thought Ms. Buck was gonna say it, and certainly, uh, the representative, the developer would be, he'd be mad at me if I didn't say it.
Talking about the amenity?
The amenity, oh, doggone it, okay, all right, you stole my thunder, all right, I'll go to the, the other page.
I was gonna go to that first, and then I'll-
I'll go back, all right. I was really excited about the amenity.
I just wanted to understand the setback. You have a forty foot lot-
Oh, goodness.
And eleven foot side setbacks. So eleven and eleven is twenty-two feet from a forty foot lot, giving you an eighteen foot wide building area?
Have, um, okay, so the forty feet, or the, the forty foot lot is an eleven foot side street.
Side what?
Side street. So, the corner lots are wider. So we have to add, um, that extra six feet on a forty foot lot on the corner. So that, basically what we, what we have is thirty foot buildable envelope width on our forty foot lots.
Okay, can we go back to that picture then? This is where I, it was lot ninety-seven I looked at? Does, you have a close up of some of the ones that have the buildable area?
Get there.
Expect me to see that?
Let me go to ninety-seven.
You're probably intimately familiar with lot ninety-seven, right? I think it's right there on the corner.
It is.
Right there on the corner, yeah. So see how it, um-
The lot ninety-seven looks smaller, and as I went down, lot one oh one, one oh two, one oh three, these are wider lots. You know, we just heard people come in here, the real world is, people get on the lot and they're not gonna look at this plan, they're gonna be coming back to us and asking us for variances because there's not enough room to do something. My question is, is why is that corner lot so small? You have several of the lots there, you could have pushed those over and got the corner lot bigger to allow that larger setback and then give them more room to build on. Is there, am I missing something?
It's just, so we, we were tasked with doing a mix of forties, fifties, and sixties. And, um, the way the configuration worked on this, um, they, you know, we had a series of forty foot lots in a row, the forty foot lot ended up on that corner. The buildable envelope for that is still thirty feet, doesn't change. It's just that you have that extra width on the side to accommodate the street, the street side.
What I'm asking, Kim, is it, is it a problem?
If we could flip it?
Well, if you, if you slide those over a little bit and give that a little bit more room, only reason I'm looking, I'm just looking for the, you know, maybe a future board or some of the younger members on this board, to hear this very item come in because somebody in a lot like this comes in and they say, gee, there wasn't enough room, there just wasn't enough room, and I needed a carport, or I needed some other item, and I just don't have it.
But, but, Mark, the, that lot isn't any smaller than the forty foot lot right next to it.
That, that buildable area is not smaller than one next to it?
Correct.
It looks smaller, that's what I was questioning.
It is not. It's still thirty feet wide, because you've got, um, let's see, you have-
Yeah, there was no dimension on there, I'm looking at it visually, it looks smaller.
Yeah, visually it does look smaller. I, I-
But it is not.
Agree with you a hundred percent, but no, it's not, the buildable envelope is still thirty feet.
Yeah, Kim, you said it was, uh, I pulled the table away, but it's eleven feet on the street side, right, on the forties? So that makes sense, eleven and five, you're losing sixteen, and you see that bottom dimension, forty-seven point three one, so you're still over, 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 um, over, over the thirty.
Correct.
And then, and then the one right next to it at ninety-eight, forty feet wide, five and five, you're left at thirty, so you're, you're actually, you're actually bigger there on, on ninety-seven, at least at the rear. You're losing a little bit at the corner, I think that's why the, you know, the, the need for her to design it is to make-
I tried to do it on here.
Oh, yeah, I understand.
Had a hard time? So I'm just looking at it visually, and I was scrolling through this, I look at that corner lot, especially after just looking at variances all before it, I'm thinking, this is another variance lot. Okay, and then the other thing, could you describe your, um, your amenities that Adam was, I took his thunder away?
Uh, oh gosh, you'll have to go back to that because I don't remember the amenities. Sorry, I know we have a pool and a clubhouse, um, and parking, um, and I think there's like a little tot lot there. Um, but, right now, the way that it's designed is that we're just designing the parking lot and the amenity is gonna come in as a separate site plan, um, once the builder settles on the configuration. This is a typical amenity plan that they want to put here, but it's not really final designed. But it will have, like I said, it will have, you know, clubhouse, pool, cabana, um, uh, whatever, like, uh, you know, benches and, um, little playground area for children.
And, and at, if there's a hundred lots at lot thirty, then that lot, that, that amenity then would be built?
Got it.
And is there a, is there a way that that's triggered back to the county?
Other than, other than through the PUD, uh, and, and suppose the board could have a completion bond for it at the time of final plat approval? We haven't talked about that, but those are, those would be the two, two ways enforceable through the PUD, through the zoning. Uh, or, you know, even, even more so having a, having a, a bond of some kind, some amount being put up.
Thanks, Kim.
These done, we'll open up to public record, or public record, public comment? Is there anyone from the public who would like to comment on this particular application? Being done, board members, any further questions for staff? Further, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, we approve this project.
I'll second it.
Second. Vote, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Motion carried, the ayes win. Moving on to item eight, project two zero two three zero nine zero zero five three, quasi judicial requiring disclosure of expertise communication. Board members, any to discuss? Adam, are you ready for your presentation?
He, he asked me, I'll get there in a minute, I'm sure. Now I get to feel what it feels like to be a planning board member going through a six hundred page agenda using an iPad, right?
Yeah.
On the weekend?
On a weekend, yes, yeah.
Two parts.
In two parts. Am I close?
Are we able to, when it come, Adam, when it comes to certain things like the fact that they didn't have the full, you know, like the amenities area and some of the common areas truly planned out, that's something that's going to come back in front of us?
It, it will, it, it will come back as its own PUD Site Development Plan submittal, uh, when they get closer to, to finalizing that. I think I'm seeing that this is the beginning of part two, and it is. The Ridgeline is application twenty, uh, project number twenty twenty-three oh nine zero zero five three, make sure I've got the right one. And that is number eight. And so this is sitting on sixty-one point three six acres, and this one's gonna be geographically, and hopefully I've got this in the right orientation, it's up, uh, east of the power line in that kind of northeast corner. And so a little, little different from us, uh, from, uh, you had Grove Side before, a former Celadine that's there, and so this is, when you, when you see, uh, the county line is, is along that east boundary of this, of this development. And so this is in an area where, where before we had kind of been along Airport Road, we were moving along kind of east to west there. This is now up, moving further, further north into, uh, into the areas, uh, uh, closer to the county line, so. Uh, and then here's a roundabout to give you some orientation there. I'm gonna go to the, the plan itself again, and then I'll come back to the, uh, development, uh, dimensional requirements.
By the way, Adam, do you guys read those surveys that the last one had? Like twenty-five pages of boundary survey, did you guys, did you guys actually read that and close that?
No, unfortunately, sometimes we do, uh, this one, I don't know if we ran, we have a, a bit of software we can run to make sure it closes. Uh, it's, it's, um, I don't know if we do it with regularity, we try to.
I mean, I know there's a, there's probably, um, title people that do all that too, I just look at that and I'm saying, I feel sorry for, for trying to do all those numbers.
We, we, we've done it before, and we've also done it where several times we've had to retype legal descriptions, so that's, uh, we don't, we don't like doing that, but we've done it before. So this one's got eight pages total to the site plan, and this one, as it says on the cover, is a, is a, uh, attached development. This is duplexes in this one. And so what you have, uh, here along with this is a road extension that's happening as part of, a part of the development. And so that, in order to, to get to Ridgeline, uh, you're, you're gonna have that, that extension from Airport Road that's coming, uh, from, from the south to the north. And then you have the, the layout that's here, and so with this one, the north is to your right, and then you have the duplex lots laid out around the, the circle, and then you'll have a stubout for uh, the next development then to come to the, to the west side, so this includes that, that road, a roundabout at its far, uh, north end. And then you see the, the layout, uh, with the, the site plan, uh, shown on, on pages three, I think it is, right? Of the, uh, the site plan, lift stations here, so you've taken care of that, uh, and it's location where you'd expect it to be along the south. And then sidewalks, like we have seen them before, I didn't mention those previously, but you have the sidewalks on one side, uh, that's serving then as, as that, uh, pedestrian amenity that's included within the, the PUDs traditionally now. And then that, off that offshoot, a continuation up until you come to the temporary, uh, the end here with that temporary cul-de-sac that will eventually extend on further to the north for, for yet, uh, other, uh, portions of the development, so that you do have remaining lots. Uh, so that between these two pages, three and four, you have the entirety of the development shown here. Uh, let me go back to my dimensional requirements. And so this one, uh, again duplex development, so it's got five thousand square foot lot size, uh, forty foot, uh, setbacks, um, five feet with zero at the common duplex wall, uh, ten foot on your, on your side yard, street setback, and then seventy percent lot coverage here, minimum lot area, uh, minimum living area, I think, the same, twelve fifty. With that, uh, we didn't have an, did not have an amenity area here with this one, uh, no, yes, no, oh, can we go back? Was that the stubout at the north? Why am I not seeing it? Page, right here? That one? It is not shown here. Okay, got it. I'm not really part of this. Okay, I didn't miss it, all right, good. So yet to come, and, um, I guess with that, I'll close, wait any questions, comments from the board. Do you have those three options? Again, as we stated previously, approval, uh, recommendation for approval to the Board of County Commissioners, recommendation for denial or continuance. We did provide public notice, uh, I think within the notice we sent out for December, a Board of County Commissioners date, assuming that you would provide a recommendation either for approval or denial with this continuance, we'll delay that. But, uh, with that, I'll wait any questions or comments, and Ms. Buck again can make a, uh, clarify anything I've gotten wrong here with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Board members, do you have any questions or comments for staff? The applicant like to come up at this time and present?
Kimberly Buck, Allen Engineering Group, again, here to answer any questions. Um, just for clarification, there is a large area off of that, um, stubbed-out road that is a set aside for, uh, future amenities. Anticipating passive recreation in there, walking paths, um, benches, cabanas, something like that.
Do these duplexes have garages?
Yes.
Is the plan for these duplexes to be single-story, or?
Yes, single-story.
Kim, that, that amenity area is heading towards the, uh, it's not under the FPL lines, though, is it?
Backs up to it.
Okay.
The applicant? Okay. At this time, we'll open it up to public comment. If there, there's anyone who would like to come up, please do so.
Carlos, we've got a graphic here, it looks like it may be too big to show in one piece, we may have to move it around a bit. That microphone to your right is a, uh, the, the one that's on the stand is a wireless, you can turn it on if you, if you, it's now to your left. Right, right next to the camera.
Yes, yep, right there, yes.
You just, uh, you, you pull it off and then you'll need to, there's a power button on the bottom, you just push it over, it'll turn red. And, not yet.
Just pretend you're on karaoke night.
That may be a good idea.
Maybe turn it around, Carlos.
Yeah, put it on the floor, try that. That's not bad.
You can identify your name, yourself with your name and your address, and you have three minutes.
Can't zoom from there, right?
No. And you, you can, if, if you're more comfortable, you can, uh, we, we, I was just, uh, yes, thank you. You can figure out what I was saying better than I could say it.
Great. I'm Leslie Wright, this is my husband Charlie. We live at 2461 Lipazon Trail in Ormond Beach. I bought 10 acres there in 2004. A couple years later, Hunter's Ridge started the development of Cypress Place off Airport Road. Pergola Play, or Pergola Place is on our property's southern border. So if you see Cypress Place down at the bottom of the picture. One of the first things Hunter's Ridge did was to fill in a ditch that carried water west to east to the little Timoca River for hundreds of years. The ditch carried water from the exact same land you're talking about building Ridgeline on. The water from that property would flow to the east into a ditch that borders, uh, the western edge of our property is on Lipazon Trail. The problem today is that that ditch doesn't exist anymore. As a result, through most of the year, there's standing water behind the homes on Pergola Place, and Hunter's Ridge knows about that issue. I personally spoken to residents there. We're unable to use the southern third of our property, and other parts of our property flood, and our neighbors to the north, who I'm sure you're going to hear from here in a minute, uh, also flood because there's nowhere for the water to go, and Lipazon Trail floods. I spent a large part of the last 20 years talking with the city of Ormond Beach about this. I've hired attorney Dennis Baer, I've tried to deal directly with KB Holmes, Hunter's Ridge, and their engineer, Mark Doust. I've spoken out at Ormond planning meetings, I've even had the mayor walk the ditch with me on Father's Day seven years ago. He agreed it was a mess. The water backup is disgusting, and yet nothing has been done about it. So our number one concern is the apparent disregard Hunter's Ridge has for the water problem they caused, and how they'll handle the water in these new developments. Where, when will, where will that north-south ditch go? How will it be maintained? Will they put back in the east, the west-to-east ditch that they took away almost 20 years ago? How will they maintain that ditch as well? Our second concern is privacy. We've invested a lot of money and time in having a very private piece of property. Along comes Riverside right on our western property line. You'll have 175 families living on the western edge of property that in Ormond Beach has maximum six families living on it. How much buffer will you leave? We'll be planting trees to maintain privacy, and we'll be building a fence. Our third concern is the traffic on Airport Road. Anybody who's ever driven on Airport Road, and especially in the last six months or a year, it's impossible. It's a safety hazard, there's already two schools there, and when they're dropping kids off or picking them up, you can barely get by, uh, so this is only going to add to that nightmare. It's obvious to me that over 20 years, Ormond Beach has no interest in, in controlling or enforcing any issues with Hunter's Ridge. They run free, as evidenced by the ditch situation. We're asking Flagler County to do better. Just stand up to your developers and hold them accountable. We're asking you to ensure that they do the right thing. We need them to stop flooding families who live on Lipazon Trail. And we're asking that Hunter's Ridge starts respecting the rural way of life that they want to build next to, and not just flood us out.
My name is Steve Halliday, I'm, uh, 2501 Lipazon, I live next to Leslie, very well-spoken on the water issue. I'd like to bring more up on some of the traffic. Average homes have two vehicles, just within their three developments, I don't know what the total number is, but going down that two-lane on Airport, whether going out to, um, Timber Creek or going out, um, to 40 is, is going to create even more of a mess. That doesn't even include Tattersall, which has not broke ground. There's, um, Avalon, which is over 2,000 homes, that's going to be on 40, that's all within like a three-mile radius. It's going to be a total cluster for not just traffic, but emergency services, as I mentioned, schools, and of course, water. Now, I'm not opposed to building responsibly, should match somewhat the area that we're in. We have a five-acre lot, and I'm not saying they do five acres, but build a nicer subdivision with a little more land in between. Those are all stack houses. I don't know if you've driven by most of these new developments, but there are no yards, you can barely get a, a rider, a riding tractor in between those. You can't plant a tree, so we're tearing down all this, uh, the trees, the environment. You know, I, I like sitting on my porch every morning, my back porch, and looking at the deer, what's going to happen when these duplexes go in and some of these other subdivisions. It's going to impact, uh, our way of living significantly. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments?
Holly Tomplay, I live at 2515 Arabian Trail, and I'm also with them. The water is ridiculous, has nowhere to go. I'm just, want to thank them for coming out.
And you, that's okay, can you just repeat that?
Our horses out there are, on our five acres are standing in water, because water has nowhere to go. So if they build over there, it's going to push that water more. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Holly.
Good evening, my name's Charlie Wright, I live with Leslie Wright at 2461 Lipazon Trail. I understand that they're going to build a lot of houses in there, that's fine with me, but they'll put retention basins in, with the water level will be high enough when, soon as it rains hard, retention basins get filled up. When they fill up, then it starts flooding. And since there is no place for the water to go right now, it's, when, it's, it's not the amount of water you have, it's, it's the speed that the water gets to the retention basin. When you've got pavement and roofs and driveways, hard surfaces that drain water quickly to a retention basin, then that, that complicates the problem right, right from the beginning. So rather than worried about the retention basins, they should be worried about relieving the water, cleaning ditches, and straightening them out prior to, uh, permitting any further building. I think that should be part of it. Thank you.
There any more public comment? Okay, seeing as none. Oh, okay.
Hello, my name is Elizabeth Fox, I live at 187 Carter Trail. I am going to speak more on, uh, the next one, but it's same builders. Um, I just want to piggyback that this development is going to affect not only Lipazon, but I live off of Durrance Lane, and it will greatly affect the drainage on Durrance Lane, that we already are completely underwater. It's, but I'll speak more on that because the next one inter, interconnects that better. But I do want to say it's not just Lipazon that this one affects. Thank you.
Would you like your rebuttal?
Good evening, uh, my name is Jake Barron, I represent...
Was that it for public comment?
Believe so. Close public comment, and now you are able to rebut.
Um, my name is Jake Barron, I represent Hunter's Ridge and, uh, US Capitol Alliance. I did want to speak on some of the drainage that the residents were discussing. Purchased this property two years ago, and I do recognize that mistakes were made two decades ago, or close to that. And I can't speak to the former developer or sub-developers, as, you know, I understand that there was a sub-developer that did fill in that ditch. Um, part of our job is to fix ditches, is to make sure that water does run out of these people's yards into historic ditches. Part of our job was renewing jurisdictional wetland lines that we had with the state, opening up those ditches, allowing them to flow again. That's, that's part of our job as master planners. We're not here to just ram homes in and ruin people's lives. That's, that's not what we're here for. The same with amenities, as we had, you know, we had four, we had those other four subdivisions come through, and we had promised amenities were, were coming. Just that, as a master plan community, it's, where do you put those? So if you have a grand entranceway to your development, we're going to put it there, and we'll put another one on the east side, instead of having each small amenity within each subdivision. Um, as far as specifics of drainage, our engineer can speak more to that. As far as Durrance Lane, I, I have seen the drainage issues there, both on the west side and on the east side. I've walked every one of those ditches. I'm generally not in a suit, uh, it's usually just muck boots, and I, I do agree that there is water that's held back over there, and my engineer can speak to where that comes from. But, uh, thank you all for your comments, and I, I am available, I can, I can give you a card. And if there's specific things that each one of you would like to point out to me, I'm happy to meet you at your properties or on our property, and we can, we can discuss those issues. Thank you.
Board members?
I have a question.
Okay.
Um, actually, Adam, maybe Kim can answer the question. I want to ask about the, uh, the drainage pop-off for your, um, for the retention pond. Is that draining into the same tributary that, that the audience people were worried about the, um, the runoff?
Going to the west.
So it is not going, so the pop-off from that drainage will not go back into the ditch that's blocking right now?
We're looking at, and, um, we're actually, to help this whole situation, we, um, the developer has retained, um, an engineer that specializes in master drainage studies, and we are looking at the master drainage for the entire development, um, as we're going through these, um, these projects. But, uh, this particular one, Ridgeline, um, the outfall will be up towards, you know, all these ponds are interconnected, and the outfall will be up towards, uh, the west, and it will go into that canal or that ditch that runs along the FPL easement, and then come, go south.
So currently, not all of it, but anything that would be draining, hitting the, the streets or the houses and the lots, would be captured in that retained, that, that stormwater, and going away from where their problem is right now?
Right, so, I mean, ultimately, it, it should help, but I, I appreciate, you know, the information, and like, uh, Mr. Barron said, um, any, any further communication would be, you know, really helpful as we finalize our, our total design package to make sure that, um, take all of that into consideration.
Yeah, I'm not sure if this would be you or Adam, but, uh, we talked about these projects on this road before, and I believe you said that this airport road is slated to become two-lane?
Four-lane.
Four-lane, I'm sorry, two-lane each direction. Um, when that, what is the tripping point? And I'm assuming tripping point is development, correct?
Always is, yes, sir.
Right, so, the, the, the oxymoron here is that that road will get better, um, I mean, you're, you're, there's going to be twice the amount of laneage and, and less blockage as the houses get put in, where if the houses stop, it remains like it is.
Correct, yeah.
Is, and the developments that are coming in are paying for that in, uh, traffic impact fee, right? This is not a burden on the taxpayer, this is, this is going to be paid, I'm assuming wholly by the, um, because they get, they're collecting fees from two communities here, right?
Se- several communities, uh, but the, uh, and then what we have is a, a payment, um, nothing earmarked either in the Flackner County Transportation Impact Fee or in the Volusia Impact Fee. But I think there's, uh, probably a, um, safe argument that could be made, there are impact fee credits that are available to the developer for, for improvements that they make, but, um, you know, some of that impact fee monies that are coming to the county and maybe also to Volusia to have some benefit to the residents here. Short answer, uh, is that as, as everything's currently crafted, uh, the master developer, the CDD ultimately would be responsible for the, the widening, uh, the, the extra four lanes, but there would, that, those, that, that activity would be creditable for impact fees. And then, and then the, the tripping point for that is still years away. It's, it's not, it's not necessarily tied to development as much as it's tied to trips. And so with it, this being a, a roadway that's not blocked or not exclusive, you don't have to show your Hunter's Ridge card to use the road, uh, certainly other development's going to cause that, that, that trip count to increase, and would cause that to be front-ended rather than back-ended.
I might add, um, and I think you alluded to this, but, um, this project is, uh, they have a, um, proportionate share agreement with the FDOT.
That's right.
And so there's, um, several million dollars that are being paid over time to the DOT. In addition, we're paying dual impact fees, um, the county's road impact fees and the Volusia County road impact fees, so. Hit from all sides.
Thank you, Kim.
I have a, have a question, uh, for you. There was one question whether or not there was going to be any fence, um, behind?
No fence is proposed.
No fence is planned, okay.
I can believe, I, I will have to check on this, I'm not 100% sure, but I believe there's a 20-foot buffer.
Okay, thank you.
I'll answer questions for the applicant? For staff? For staff? Discussing the site development plan for Ridgeline. What questions?
Trying to get back into my iPad.
Oh, my God.
Well, I make a motion we approve the project, assuming that they are working on this water issue.
Adam, at what, at what stage does that, do we see the plans for that? Because we've seen all of that, all of those surveys and whatnot. So where are those reports at?
So related to utilities, really get into that as the plats will come in. And so that, at the time of preliminary plat, you know, this kind of level we're having, will serve commitments, things like that. We think that's all been taken care of and is not affected by the dispute that we're in. Ultimately, the final plating, when we get to that, that's when nothing can be approved until those utilities are in place or bonded at that point.
Okay.
But preliminary plat, back to your question, preliminary plat is when you'll see that again and when we're getting a step closer.
We'll see some drainage plans at some point?
Yes, you'll see those in specificity as part of the preliminary plat. So that's when you'll see your construction drawings and, you know, you're drilling down. Again, here with this, you're a little high on your view. You're at the zoning level. We're drilling down as we go.
So when they, you know, when they develop the property, they bring in fill and everything else, and they have their drainage plan, you know, it's going to be higher elevation in the surrounding properties, the water's going to go to them unless they have the proper plan. So we want to make sure that that's, please.
I'd say that typically, you know, we'd all come back and say, well, that makes, that's how it should be. I'm making something bigger. But the other argument about it, and I'll say this and I'll still stand by it, an engineered system is better than a non-engineered system. And so not that it creates, or not that it corrects the, any natural or any sins of the past. Water Management District generally, when they look at this, I'm probably going to state it somewhat incorrectly, is that you can't send more water to your neighbor than what had already been coming to your neighbor. You know, here clearly, I think there's been some discussion about some stuff that's been done in the past and that, you know, they're going to focus on that. And, you know, to the extent that they can fix it, they'll try to help. But, you know, certainly there's some other things that I think we all know. I could talk about them for longer than you want to hear me talk about activities that have happened to the north that have impacted collectively this area. And some of that, when we talk about hydro period restoration, some of that is the obligation of Hunter's Ridge DRI and the development of the Hunter's Ridge DRI to effectively make this area wet again. It's part of the requirement from the original DRI. So we all need to put that into the collective knowledge of what's happening here. You know, that things are going to get wetter in certain parts of this area because it's a requirement of the DRI, because previous development in the area had actually drained this area. And when you look at those old topo maps, there were several areas that were clearly marked swamp.
Thank you.
Will we have a motion from Mr. Corbett? Do we have a second?
Yeah, I'll second the motion.
Vote and all those in favor, say aye.
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 Carries it. Moving to number nine, Project 2023090054, quasi-traditional requiring disclosure of ex parte communication from the board. Seeing none.
I just make a note that I could not open that on this pad. Find out about it tonight.
Right.
No, none, no part two? You couldn't open it all, or, okay.
Oh, I couldn't open part one or part two.
Okay.
Not also on the public link. On my iPad.
Okay.
Adam?
Yes, ma'am. This one's Oak-sided Orman Station. And so this one has the previous one's PUD development agreement and the PUD site development plan. You can see the location on this one. This is the one to the north of the prior application. And so I'm going to surmise that from the applicant's testimony that comments, now while they can certainly still be made in the record, that they'll be working on this one as well on the drainage question because everything flows here generally from the north to the south. But with that, I'll go to the drawing. Let's see. And so the orientation with this one, again, I think is going to be, how many pages do we end up having on this? Nine pages on this one, and then... And so you're picking up here to the left-hand side, the orientation here of this graphic is going to be north to your right, south to your left, and ending in the cul-de-sac there. Strickland-Durance is going to be off the page to the right-hand side. That connection that we see leading from that terminus at the north end of the Brookside Correction, Ridgeline Development is what you'll see there to the left. And here's all single-family detached, Kim Wright. And so then picking up from where we basically left off. Let me see if I can get a better view here by zooming out. So page three, four, five, all details continuing on from that. You can see the layout there. And then here's the temporary sales center that's being shown on the last page, I think is what we had. And so consistent with what we've seen previously, we're trying to give you that layout now on all of these. I'll go down to the development table. Sorry. 5,000 square foot in the lot size on these, 20 feet width on these is what we had in here. 35-foot height, 5 foot and zero. We did have the townhomes. I saw that. That's what threw me off was we had townhomes in part. So these are going to be shared, not duplexes. They will have that, and so you don't want to, we're hesitant to call these anything other than townhomes because they're single-family attached units that have that shared party wall. And so we have that common townhome wall, zero feet on that. So that's why we're going down to the minimum 20-foot lot width on these. 1,250 square feet, again, the same living area, the minimum living area that shows up in the others. And then again, with the 70% impervious lot coverage and not including a separate under-roof count there that typically we would see the 35% as being a measure of under-roof, this one being a measure of impervious area. With that, I'll close with the three options we had previously. Recommendation for approval, Oak-sided Orman Station, or denial, or continuance, are your three options available? Again, I'll close with any questions or comments and look to Ms. Buck to clean up anything I've gotten wrong. Thank you.
Thanks, Adam. Board have any questions? For staff?
I'd like to ask Adam a question. Adam, all this, in these two projects we just talked about, all this drainage, road drainage, county canals, these development drainages, are all this water supposed to end up in the Timoca River?
Yes, sir. And so you do have what had, on the east of this is a, called Groover Branch that's there. And I think what maybe the testimony had been provided before had that east-west that may have been broke and that before it had gone into Groover Branch. And if that had been severed, then you, it ain't doing what it was doing before. And so now what has to happen with this and, you know, to make that fix, it's going to move south from here. And so what it will do, it'll, with these developments, it'll have to go west and then south and cannot then flow back north to make it back down. And that's just, that's how it's going to have to be.
Okay, is the applicant present? Would you like to come up for any presentation?
Kimberly Buck, Allen Engineering Group. I think Adam covered it pretty well. Again, the stormwater is going to the west and to the south in this area and the mix of small, single-family and townhome development.
The applicant?
Stormwater is going to the west. Where is it going when it goes to the west?
The, it varies depending on what's going where.
The county canal or anything?
There is that, the drainage ditch that runs along the FPL easement. And, but we're also required to rehydrate the wetlands. So for starters, the ponds will overflow into the wetlands on-site. And then those wetlands will meander and they ultimately get into that drainage ditch and then run south. And yes, and then it goes to the little Timoca.
There are no further questions or comments for the applicant. We'll open up to public comment. I just need to state separately, state your name and address separately so we know you guys are both up here.
Hi, my name's Kelsey Pardini, and I'm at 193 Carter Trail.
Elizabeth Fox?
Seven Carter Trail. Yes.
Make sure that any comments do make it directly into the microphone so that we just missed your name entirely, pretty much.
Elizabeth Fox, 187 Carter Trail. So we just were informed about this meeting today. So we tried to do as much due diligence as we could, but we weren't really prepared. So let me just correct that. We actually were not informed of this meeting. We saw it on the Neighbor App, thankfully, that they had posted, sorry, that they had put, can I talk in this one too? No, okay, that they had posted, so we were not informed. So you guys had a great presentation. However, we had about two hours to figure out the 257-page, one document and then the other one. So we live down Durance-Strickland Road towards the west side. We're in Flagler County. And we, our only way in and out of our, to our homes is Durance Road. And as, you know, Adam has stated, there is a lot of flooding that we have on that road. During this last heavy storm that we had, I wasn't even able to get down it for a week in my car because it was so flooded. And all that water comes from this parcel that they're trying to build on. So, you know, them constructing homes here is just going to cause more flooding onto our road that the county is obviously already aware of. I've reached out to our county commissioner, Liam Pennington, multiple times. You know, I have video footage, photos. You know, like I said, our road's impassable whenever there's a storm. So them constructing all these homes, I feel that they should have a stormwater drainage plan presented and approved before they're allowed to even start building these homes. You know, we're taxpayers, we're residents, and this negatively impacts us. You know, we pay almost $4,000 in taxes every year, and 57% of that goes to the general fund for Flagler County. So, you know, this should be a main issue for the county. We did have a, one of our neighbors who about two weeks ago had a medical issue, and she was bucked off her horse and broke ribs and had to be transported to a hospital. Our road was in such bad condition, she could not be taken by ambulance. She had to be taken by a helicopter from the property because of Flagler County's road conditions. You know, we've complained numerous times about this road condition and as well as the flooding. And, you know, we've been out there two years, and we've had the flooding occur at least three or four times to where we can't even get in and out of our property. We don't get trash service, we can't get ambulances, we can't get fire trucks to our home if there's an emergency. So Flagler County also needs to look at this on their perspective of what needs to be done for them to bring this road up to the conditions that it should be. All of this water that drains from our area goes southwest to the Timoca River. So if Hunter's Ridge is proposing to have all their water drain into the Timoca River, it's just going to back up more onto our road, which is going to impede us even further.
I just want to add something. So I heard Adam earlier mention the hydro period restoration plan. As far as I'm aware, on October 30th, Orman Beach actually sued Flagler County and the developer because they said allegedly that the developer is not up to par with that. I might...
Restoration plan?
Yeah, the hydro period restoration plan. So another concern of ours is if they are actively being sued right now that their water plan isn't working, why should we believe them that they have some kind of plans in the future that it's going to work? You know what I mean? It doesn't make any sense. We're in fear because this has been going on, like the developer mentioned, this has been going on for years. They're new developers, so this developer's not at fault for the previous broken promises that they said they were going to help Durance Lane and Leeway and all of that. But I really just want to stress the fact that there is an open lawsuit as of a week ago. I haven't seen any new news articles about it. So unless they've settled, the hydro period restoration plan is, as far as Orman's lawsuit says, not up to par. So that's a deep concern for us, basically saying that the water, as Kelsey was saying, is just going to impede us even more on Durance Lane. I'll add that, thank you.
Before you go any further, can counsel touch on that?
Yes, it is true that the city of Orman Beach filed suit against U.S. Capitol Alliance and Flagler County. Part of their claim involves the hydro restoration. But that has been completed in Flagler County. The lawsuit involves the hydro period restoration and its status within the city of Orman Beach. As you know, this DRI straddles the county line. And so we're all set with that in our county. There might, there are certainly issues with Strickland Road and Durance Lane. Some of you have been on the board longer than others. You may have some familiarity with this issue. The county does maintain the western portion of that roadway because it's in our jurisdiction. But it was not an approved roadway. It was not engineered. It was not done by the county. And this is what happens in those situations. We've seen that in other parts of the county, like Marineland Acres and the Mondex, and here is yet another instance. However, getting back to this road, on the eastern half of it, that's in the city of Orman Beach, and it's not maintained at all. It's not owned by the city. There, we're not sure what to do. It's an intractable problem that's been going on for many years. According to the residents, it is flooding with increasing frequency these days. It's getting worse, not staying the same. Now, I don't want to get too far beyond what you've asked me, but I would just say that the drainage plan is something for this subdivision that would have to be approved by the Water Management District according to their legal standards. Its impact on the roadway, it's going to be hard for you at this point in time at a site development plan level to know the impact of this development on that roadway in terms of drainage.
Right.
That really comes later. I know that's not going to be satisfactory to the residents here who are commenting. We do heed your concerns. We hear you. We know there's a problem. No one right now quite has the answer.
Can I just make one more comment as well on that? As well as the flooding on our road, I don't know if anyone has ever been on Airport Road or any of you have ever been there. But anytime there is like any little rain, Airport Road itself has standing water on it from their drainage ponds that back up onto the road. So even... So, even their current development that they have in process, the one that you guys approved, I'm not sure at what meeting that you briefly discussed in the beginning, where they have, I think they do have a model home or two model homes already done there. That does, that water does flood already onto Airport Road. So, I, I think there's various concerns of flooding throughout all these different developments that they're just constructing. And it's just a very big concern and a life safety issue for us when we can't even get emergency access to us during, you know, flooding. Or we, it wasn't even a hurricane, it was just a heavy rain that we had for two days that I couldn't even leave my home. Thankfully, I had my boyfriend's vehicle, that was a truck, but if not, I would've been stranded at my house. You know, we don't get trash service, during the hurricane, we didn't get trash service for over two weeks. You know, what are we supposed to do with our, our trash? And all this is going to do is just cause more flooding. But that, they, like I said, they still have standing water on Airport Road as well, so. And I did have one other question. I was just trying to confirm what the buffer is from Strickland to where they're starting to build.
I believe that the engineer said a 20-foot, but not to quote her, so.
Okay, thank you.
To be real clear for the board also, there is no buffer between residential and residential.
I was gonna say, these are two of the same, this is the same neighboring, like sister community, right? So, okay. Hi.
Hi. Earlier tonight, we watched you send a man away to get a survey-
Will you state your name and address?
Leslie Wright, 2461 Lipizon Trail. Earlier tonight, we watched a fella get sent away to go get a survey for putting a carport up. But yet, we just sat here with all of these unresolved issues for 20 years. Imagine living like that for 20 years at your homes and see how like, how much you would like that. But we got approval without understanding what they're going to do. And they say they're going to do something because that's what they always say they're going to do. Every time you talk to them, they'll say, even the city of Ormond Beach, Steve Spraker will look you in the eye and say, there's a plan for that. And I stand up at meetings and I say, what is that plan? Cause I'd like to know, cause I've been fighting for it for 20 years. And knowing all that, you give it approval. And I just wanted to go on the record to say, I don't understand that process.
Thank you. Is there any more public comment? Yep, you have three minutes up here at the microphone. Just need you to identify yourself by your name and your address. And then Vanna over there, I mean Adam over there, will put three minutes on there.
Alicia Halliday, 2501 Lipizon. I was just wondering, they were saying that there is a drainage ditch along the power lines? There is no drainage ditch along the power lines.
Okay.
Our house is back up to that. You can ride a side-by-side down there, do whatever you want. There's no drainage ditch back there. And I was wondering how they plan on making Airport a four-lane road? How was that ever gonna happen?
I'm not allowed to answer you right now, but the applicant does have time for rebuttal.
And on some of the paperwork, I can't pull it up in here for some reason, but you showed some drainage for these different subdivisions. Leeway. Leeway, it comes off and that floods. So, I don't know, and on Leeway, I don't know if y'all know, but in the city of Ormond, they are building Tattersall on the corner of Airport and Timber Creek, which is flooded at all times. And, what was, oh, and Tattersall's also supposed to be going, their drainage problem is supposed to be going into Grover Branch. I don't know how much Grover Branch can handle. And I'm just concerned, does no one care about the animals out there? I mean, nobody cares about the wildlife, nobody cares about our animals, our horses? We're just supposed to let little kids come over and mess with their horses all the time now? Cause we're gonna have duplexes up behind our houses? That's why we moved away.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Any more public comment? Do we have any questions? Adam?
I, I think, one thing I wanted to emphasize, somebody had said approval. You are a recommending body, and so you, you didn't approve anything other than provide a recommendation for approval to the board. So just for clarification, and that's, that's hopefully, those folks who are within 300 feet who received notice had that in their notice letter that the, the next step's gonna be the board accounting commissioners.
Appreciate that clarification.
As for the rest, I, I think we've got, we, we were at the meeting with Ormond and heard, heard speakers in that area north of Strickland-Durin. It's, that was done as a minor rural subdivision. There's, there's no benefit of a plat there. Water Management District, in fact, had been very interested in that a few years back after what Mr. Ernest Wheaton had, had done, but not to say him alone. Prior to him was, was Marcus Junior Strickland, who had done some development there. And then, and I'd, I'd say for the record that our minor rural subdivision regulations that we adopted were, were with this area in mind for the most part. And there is some disclaimer language that's required in the deeds there in this area that the speaker maybe omitted, that refer to, this is an area where subdivisions, subdivision infrastructure's not been provided in accordance with our subdivision regulations. And it does say, as part of that required deed disclaimer language, that Flagler County will not provide any services. That effectively, you're, you're in an area where you're on your own, that, that, you know, there's, like it or not, it was something that the, the landowners at the time had asked for in order to do these, this development of this type, to be able to divide this land without the benefit of a plat. You know, and whether that's good or bad, I, I can't, can't really say. But it's, it was an allowance that was requested, and, and it is something that's available there. I, I belabor the point just a little bit more. This is probably safe to say the crux of our argument with Ormond is that Durin's with its condition, Strickland-Durin's with its condition that it's in, where, again, we're maintaining the part as best we can, which consists of grading, drainage being a whole other issue there, but at least the roadway itself, that part that we know that's in Ormond Beach within Volusia County is not maintained by anybody. And we think that's the problem, that's the choke point, but we, we have to have then the access to 40 grade and the 40 grade easement that, that we've been granted. And so that's one of our points of contention with Ormond Beach that we'll likely have more discussions about, will make you more aware of as, as it becomes important to include that. But that's something the residents there, both within Flagler County and within, specifically within Durin's Acres and, and the city of Ormond Beach, I would say rely on at the times when Strickland Road, Durin's Lane becomes impassable. And, and unfortunately, now that's happening with greater frequency. So that's, that's something I think that we're, we're gonna be talking more about as, as we progress through the lawsuit and, and other items. We'll, we'll bring that information forward to the board and certainly to the public as that, as that advances.
Well, thank you for that, Adam. Would the applicant like time for rebuttal?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to answer each of the questions as they were asked.
Put your name and all of that.
Jake Barron, US Capitol Alliance. As to the, the first couple of questions, I'll start with the Airport Road drainage issue. There is one particular inlet that has a drainage issue, and that was because when it was engineered initially, and this is not through Allen Engineering Group, it was engineered for a 25-year flood for, for whatever reason. And it's basically at the top of bank. So, as things, as it rains, water comes up, that water comes out of that pond through that inlet. We are working with, you will get a future subdivision map of future PUD for the retail on the other side of the road, and we are working to put a retention pond on that side to ease some of that drainage. So, it really speaks to what we were talking about before, trying to fix some of the mistakes of the past. The other issue was a hydro period restoration plan that Sean spoke to and Adam spoke to. They were specifically talking about, the city's assertion is that there is a hydro period plan that had to be specifically done within a 276 acre, sorry, acre piece within Ormond Beach. Like, it had to be specifically there, it had to be permitted through them, had to be done through them, doesn't matter if it happened already, it had to be done and permitted through them. So it's, it's really separate from whether or not a weir was installed or if a ditch was plugged. That hydro period was supposed to negate the effects of digging Hull Creek, this Hull Creek channel. So by plugging that ditch and putting in a weir, it actually put more water in the northwestern side of the site. So, again, it's, it's really a conversation I'm happy to have with individuals, but it's definitely complicated. Now, this is on the northeastern side of the site. So, for people all the way out west who drain southwest through Hull Creek and their water runs out east as well down Durin's Lane, I don't understand how this particular subdivision on the northeastern side of our property would flood them further. I am in agreement with them that Durin's Lane is a difficult road. The Ormond Beach section is completely just not taken care of. There was a pretty intense washout on the Ormond Beach side. Flagler County does have their graders out there and they take care of that. There have been multiple culverts that have been broken in the past by different individuals out there, and we're trying to work to figure out how we can get some of that water to drain. But remember, when you're talking about drainage, you also need to deal with the state. And you're not, I can't walk in and say, okay, you know what, at the top of 40 grade and the intersection between Shed Lane and Durin's Lane and 40 grade, let's pull water down there and then run it across to the weir and shoot it down through Hull Canal. I can't do that because the district doesn't let me do that. I can go to the district and I could potentially be the applicant, but every one of these people behind me have to be the applicant too. And so does the county. So these are really complex, and two years sounds like a long time, but it's really not. When it comes to the drainage ditch that we're talking about in the FPL, there's a historic ditch that has been there, part of it is still open, there are culverts that run underneath that first logging road and in the second one. There are culverts there and there's a ditch that runs all the way up, almost the entirety of the way. And that runs down to a triple culvert at the intersection of the FPL line and Airport Road, and then that runs down to a triple culvert there, trickles down, past Amelia, past all those. I've walked every one of those, we've opened up those ditches, we've pulled out tires that have been there for the last 20 years, and we're working on getting that, you know, to flow better. If you were to go there today, you don't have to trust me, you can go to where they're building that self-storage facility, that drainage is right now all the way down to the bottom. Where a few weeks ago, I agree, when we had 18 inches of rain, that was high, it really was. But now it is, it is lower because we opened up those ditches. I would love to help every one of these people, I would. And that is part of what we're doing. I can't do any of that without money. And it's part of the give and take of a development. We're going in, we're fixing up land. One of the residents spoke about how there's so much land that people think, do we think of the animals? We do. I absolutely do think of the animals. We have 1,900 acres. Of that, I believe there's 800 that's gonna be actually developed. The rest of it'll be preservation land. There's 2,000 acres of conservation land that the county owns now that was part of Hunter's Ridge. Our job is to get rid of feral hogs. I'm out there almost every day and make sure that there's no poaching, although somebody recently poached our hog, hid traps, but, so it comes with the job. And I do, I appreciate all the comments, I do. As to the four lanes, there was a question there, how it's gonna be four lanes? It's a pretty wide right-of-way. If you were to drive down Airport Road, that whole southern side is going to be the extra two lanes. We actually got held up when we were putting in, we had to, as part of our job, we had to put in two and a half miles of sewer. So we upsized the sewer from Timber Creek all the way out till past, sorry, where that traffic circle is, just passed over there where that little New Jersey looking pond is. And part of that was Ormond Beach said, we want it to be in the future median of the road. So we had to go out, get surveys of where that median is going to be, and, and that's where we put the force main. Cause it is very much in the plans to put in those extra two lanes. As far as the traffic is concerned, I'm sorry if I'm going out of order, there's a lot of questions. As far as the traffic is concerned, I'd say most of that traffic is further in the Ormond Beach side. There's a, there are two schools there. And yeah, the, the traffic does get bad there at three o'clock in the afternoon, which in my opinion, if you had six lanes and you have a school, there's always gonna be a pull-off, there's always gonna be a traffic guard. And I don't know how I could help that. This road was put in for Hunter's Ridge, it wasn't really a State Route 40 bypass. It is used as that now, I have no intention of gating it off ever, I would never do that. But it is definitely something to, you know, to think about, how do you deal with the traffic? In terms of the development that's going on on the corner of Airport Road and Timber Creek, there is a large water tower over there. And Ormond Beach opens that water tower and they completely flood out that piece of property. That is not naturally occurring, that is from hundreds of gallons of water being poured out of a retention. And again, that's not my business, but if, if you were to go out there, you would absolutely see a lot of standing water there. Grover Branch and that, that creek. So I've seen, I've, I've gone through a whole lot of drainage studies. Much of that water does come from where the Ormond Crossing development will be. Wayne Griffin lived where Grover Branch comes out and connects to Durin's Lane, and I, I agree that, I, I've seen that area wash out completely. I do think that pushing a lot of that water that's held up right now towards the west into that historic ditch, which will be fixed as part of our St. John's permit and our Army Corps permit, I do think that that will help the area. And again, if, if residents have any thoughts as to how we can fix that, I am happy to hear and happy to walk it with them. Thank you.
Any further questions or comments, board members?
I have a comment. I'd like to thank the public and the applicant for comments, and it's amazing that you remembered every single one of those questions almost in order and ready to answer them. And I wanna just echo Adam's comment on the fact that we're, we're a recommendation board, we're not here to approve or, or anything like that. The suggestion that I wanna make is that you guys obviously have issues out there and it's, you know, Flagler, Ormond Beach, who's doing what, and that obviously all needs to come together. I, I encourage the, the developer to reach out, which, I mean, you obviously have offered your support to them, but maybe some type of community meeting, because they are part of your community, even though you're a separate development, they are part of your community to, instead of having these questions come up now while we're, you know, trying to make a decision, cross that bridge before you guys even get here or as you guys move along, highly, highly suggested because they are part of your community. Going towards, and, and water drainage is, is top of my list, my concern. You know, development's gonna happen, we're, we're growing, you know, people need places to live. The size of our properties are, are getting smaller, it's just the trend that we're, we're moving in and it is what it is. But with development like this, hopefully, you know, have faith in the engineers and they're gonna develop the land. Once the land gets developed, engineers push the water where it needs to go and hopefully it relieves everybody. You know, and we have to have faith in the engineers to, to make that happen. But really, truly, reach out to your community and work with them along the way, and I think everything is going, don't, don't wait for it to get here. Try to get to it beforehand, and it's gonna make life a lot easier for everybody. So that's just my comment.
Your public comments are closed, if there's nothing else for staff?
I have a question for staff. Adam, do we have any information that any of these developments by US Capitol will have an effect on the roads? I guess you said Durin's Road, is that what it was? And what was the other road, Strickland Road? And, um, what was the other road, Strickland Road?
You're, you're, we, we consider it the same road, Strickland Road and Flagler County, Durance Lane, and Orman, what we understand, but, uh, we have no, no information we presented about any deleterious effects to, to Strickland-Durance, uh, and I'll tell you, in 2010, there had been in the prior iteration of the Development Order for Hunter's Ridge, a potential tie-in and an improvement requirement, but in 2010, that was eliminated from the, from the DRI Development Order, because the developer at the time came back and said, I'm not gonna use Strickland, there's, this is, I, I think probably for the reasons we're talking about now, it was gonna be too hard to try to undo what had, what had been done and what had not been done.
The Orman side?
Yes, yes.
And that, and just out of curiosity, too, that side in Flagler County, that is, is that Flagler County property that the road is on?
It is, and that, and that's the developer of Orman Crossings, had come to the county, I'm not gonna remember the year, but it-
But we own that right away.
We do, we do.
So we are responsible, or we are not responsible?
We are now, for the two-mile portion that's within, maybe it's one and a half miles, it's within, uh, Flagler County itself.
But our drainage has to go into, um, Orman for it to continue, and we're getting boxed up there, is that what, one of the drainage problems with that?
We, we've done nothing to modify any drainage that was pre-existing, but the short answer there is that, yes, the Flagler County's drainage from the north does, does flow from here, it flows southeast into, into, uh, and I, that's why I was pulling this up, um, not, not for the portion over here that, where the, the comments were, were made about Wheaton and Strickland, but, uh, there is actually a canal that I, I think does run along here also, uh, parallel on the north side of Strickland-Durance, it's been a while since I've paid attention to how the flows work, but there's one drain here, uh, this is, uh, formerly Wayne Griffin's property, and then there's one here, uh, and then these are both the, the crossings across Strickland-Durance that have been probably most discussed here recently, and these are both within Orman Beach itself. And, and this portion is the one we're talking about, that, um, well, really, from, from generally, uh, this, this point, I think it's, uh, here, is the county line, uh, so that from this point eastward is, is in, uh, Orman Beach and, and Volusia County, from this point westward, uh, is Flagler County, and the extent of our maintenance legitimately, I'd, I'd admit that to everybody, it's been grading. We haven't done any work on any ditches, any swales, uh, anything on the sides there, we've, we've strictly been involved in, in grading the roadway surface itself.
Okay, um, we have a motion.
I understand we're, we're a recommending body, we recommend something to the Board of County Commissioners. Feel like I like to recommend to them that they do something about the drainage before they create any more development that's gonna add to the drainage problem. I know it's, it, it's a difficult situation, I live on the west side of county, and, you know, Flagler County is basically flat woods, and drainage is a problem, Flagler County is basically a retention pond, except for the north part of it, but drainage is a problem all over, and it, and it takes some serious, you know, some serious attention to get it done right, and it ought to be looked into a little further before you add to it, uh, my thought.
Adam, what are our guidelines with that? Because at nowhere, and, and this is something for you guys to understand, too, is we have a, a set of very black and white boxes that we check, as far as how we're supposed to vote on these, it's not whether or not we want 40-foot lots, or whether or not we believe that you're telling the truth about swimming to your house during a hurricane, it's, we're set to a specific guidelines. So there's an order of process that things get built in, and so we, we don't have that drainage information right now, because that's not where they're at. So, Adam, to you, in regard to all of this, and knowing that there's an order of process to build, and that drainage really isn't on our, does this work, because that's above our volunteer grade level, what are we able to do so that we are able to say we too constantly are about the drainage issues, we're getting ready to put in thousands of more homes on very little piece of property? Can we do something?
The, the, I guess the, the parts that I'll tell you about is, are that, um, back to what I'd mentioned before, water management and, and how it handles development now prohibits us from doing harm. And, and so that, uh, I would, I would argue strongly that an engineered system is preferred over what we have now, which is a lack of an engineered system. And, and so I do think there's some sheet floats happening, I do think there's some sins of the past that had happened by, by prior developers, prior landowners, I, I think we all know the, the, some of those players. And so some of that i- is, is to be undone, or, or would need to be undone in order to have the improvements, uh, placed within these subdivisions. But I, I don't, I don't wanna oversell what, what I can't, that the, the district to, to the degree that it handles its stormwater permitting, uh, the current design is a 24-hour, 25-year storm event, I think I'm stating the right order, I always flip those. And then I think you had testimony from the representative of the developer that, and I've heard this from other engineers that, that, that do this work, and I think that's what had been said, is that Kim Buck doesn't design to that, she designs to a greater standard, and, and others have done this similarly, where you have a minimum, but they design intentionally higher, because they don't wanna have the complaints that come back, if nothing else, within their development. That's the, the degree of their, their involvement, they're, they're not trying to solve the sins, you know, that are, that are elsewhere. And certainly, I appreciate Mr. Barron's comment, that, that, uh, I think we, we lose that, that sight, uh, that recognition, that developers aren't altruistic, they're, they're profit gener- motivated, they're profit generating, their endeavors are, are to make profits for their investors, for their people. At the same time, that doesn't obligate anyone to approve garbage, but, but I, you know, remembering here that this is a DRI with a master plan that has a package of rights that says development's gonna occur here, in this area, in this proximity to the folks that are on the east side of this. And, and really, what we're talking about here is probably the nuances of how that's gonna, how that's gonna look, the, the 20-foot setback distance, uh, the, the fact that the drainage will be designed so it flows from the east to the west, and is collected there, and then, and then flows south from there. And so some of that's gonna be the, you gotta, you gotta trust the engineers, the, the folks that are involved with this, that it's gonna happen that way. Does that mean your house is gonna flood, uh, tomorrow, uh, or after this is done? You know, no, it, 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 uh, it doesn't give you any assurance, you can't come back later and say, well, you know, this happened, and it's because of that that I'm, I'm flooding. I think, uh, Mr. Boyd was right on track, too, that my, my several predecessors ago in, in my seat had defined the area of Flagler County as poorly-drained piney flatwoods. And when you think about it, and those that have heard me preach about this, and already I've gone beyond where I should, but Flagler was formed from the, it wasn't formed from the best of St. John's and the best of Volusia, it was formed from the part that nobody wanted in those two counties. And so that, that doesn't really create a, a, a rationale for an apologist's argument now, but it's no, no joke to any of us, or no surprise to any of us, that Volusia didn't give up the best of its lands, and St. John's didn't give up the best of its lands to form Flagler County. It, it's, it was the basin in between. And so, you know, we've, we've talked about it internally, and, and we know that, you know, we're, we're land poor, the stuff that's left is the, is the, the, it's the stuff that's left. And, and there are challenges with it, but this particular development has its package of development rights, and for them to proceed as they are, they're, they're within their legal parameters. So, back to your question, ma- Madam Chair, that, uh, this meets our requirements for not only your review, for recommendation, whether it's for approval or denial, you, you have that, that information that you need sufficient to do that, in my opinion, to be able to make that recommendation. And then likewise, for the Board of County Commissioners to be able to make their decision on these PUD-level decisions. Again, we'll drill down closer as we get into this, we'll have the plat information that will come forward with great specificity on the construction drawings and showing you how that's gonna be designed there from a, from a construction standpoint, and so we'll, we'll get there closer, but at this point, I don't think you have anything that's been omitted from your review.
Got him. Board members?
I'm, 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 I'm- I'm sorry, the, the pre and post effect is still gonna be a standing rule, that they cannot make this worse for their neighbor's property. Whether or not he fixes their problems is a different story, but the St. John's permit and the engineering that will follow, and the construction that will have to happen according to that permit, will not allow them to make this flood on the neighbor's property, am I correct?
Sir, we, we have to depend on the water management for that, yes, sir, you are correct.
Well, the engineers and the water management too, you know, we don't, you know, our, our county doesn't personally review that, we allow them to do, but that is what the, what the ordinances, the ordinances are doing.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve the application, um, based on, we can't get to the next step without our recommendation, um, to, to, so, just based on that, I'm gonna, I'm gonna recommend, uh, approval.
Okay, we have our first motion, do we have a second?
Our second motion.
First, we have a second, we'll move to a vote, all those in favor say aye.
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 Four ayes, one nay. Moving to number 10, application, project number 2023100024, quasi-judicial, requiring disclosure of expertise communication, board members?
No, again, I, I could not read this either, so.
Okay, finish with the expertation, staff, are you ready to proceed with your presentation?
Yes, ma'am, I am. This one and the next item both are coming in, uh, if you recall, and, and, uh, I don't remember if I put it in the, in each of these packets, but these are previously approved PUDs, uh, they're, they're a little older, and so what had happened was, they, they predate the ownership group that's now, uh, working in Hunter's Ridge, they predate DR Horton coming in with its Orman Station concept, and so what we have is, is we have older language that needs to be cleaned up. And so when I made that reference to the lot coverage versus impervious, you know, that's, that's our biggest concern here, is that, uh, when we came forward, uh, with DR Horton advancing its product, uh, the lot coverage harms them, because it, it doesn't allow them to do the development, uh, that, that they're intending to, to complete here, within both Saladine and Iris, the former Saladine and Iris, uh, now Grove Side and Garden Side for each of these. And so, uh, absent that, these, these developments, especially, uh, this first one, uh, Garden Side, I think I got that right, Saladine, formerly Saladine, is already platted, and so you can see the, the layout here, uh, you know, it seems maybe contrary to your thinking, it's like, well, why are we doing this? Because the thing's already platted. It's the dimensional requirements, specifically the lot coverage, that's our concern here with this. And this was admittedly discovered, uh, when, uh, the developer, DR Horton, came in to, to complete its models. Also admit for the record that as these had both progressed, we went back and looked, I, I'll take the blame, because, uh, I don't, I, I probably am the reason why it happened. We had referenced, as we see here, and, and maybe I still need to do some, some fixing on this language, uh, where the base district is the R1D, and then it varies in the following, and, and then we list the dimensional requirements that vary from the R1D, and it admittedly, this, this isn't really the R1D anymore, it's specific to, this development's specific to Saladine. And so what, what had been there before is you had this lot coverage language, we had this 35%, and this needs to come out. Uh, I thought this was the, this is the existing, this is 2017-06, and so this is the existing language here, with a 5,000, the 35-foot, the lot coverage at 35%. See if the other language made it in. That may be part of the problem then, too, I don't see it in your packet. Let's see if it's in this other one. So here's the draft here for Iris. I thought it was in here, but the, the language then would be similar to here for Iris. What's happening in both of these is the strike-through for the lot coverage, you'll see the, uh, the, it's instead expressed as impervious lot coverage, instead of lot coverage in our typical terminology, restricted to square footage under roof. And so that's the changes that are happening, basically, to both of these. No, that's bit convoluted in my explanation, we really didn't do anything else, uh, with these. The Saladine Garden Side is the one that has platted, the Iris, uh, Grove Side, Iris Garden Side is coming forward, uh, and is nearing its, its point of, of being final-platted on its side, and so that, uh, both of these are at the point where model home development is being, uh, being advanced. With that, I'll await questions or comments from the board, and then again, Kim can clean up most of what I just said, but that was the issue, was the, the lot coverage. The intent is to have the language match what's become a template now for us, and so where we don't have a separate lot coverage reference with a, with an impervious reference, it's all covered under impervious.
Understood.
Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Board members, do you have any questions or comments for staff?
Yeah, I just wanna clarify, also, all you're saying, that, again, I wasn't able to read this at all, only thing we're voting on today is the change to, where it's saying maximum impervious lot coverage being 70%.
I, I, the bottom line is yes, but I also, what I did was, instead of, and you, you see it in the staff report, but you didn't get a chance to look at it, 'cause you couldn't pull it up, but I went through and said, I took these and put them into the new format. So since these were done in 2017 and 2018, we've changed how we did it. And I, I, originally, I was gonna leave them in that old format, but I didn't wanna have the problem at the Board of County Commissioner level, where we've, we've had some pretty substantial changes to these, uh, about tree preservation, about, uh, uh, the sidewalk language, we've, we've got that template boiled down pretty good. And so what I did was, I, I took all of that information, uh, for both of these, and put it into the new format. And so, but the, the, the bottom line change that's happening here is that lot coverage.
Would the applicant like to come up for a presentation?
Buck, Allen Engineering Group, um, our biggest, uh, concern with the, with the original 35% is we were ending up with really tiny houses. Um, and so this allows us to, um, you know, do 70% impervious, uh, which allows the two-car garage and the, um, the two-car driveway, and allows for a porch or a patio on the, on the backside of the house. And, uh, just to give you a little bit of assurance, the, the original design for stormwater was based on 70%, so it, it is covered, um, under the design of the, the development.
Okay, thank you. Board members, do you have any questions or comments for the applicant? Are there any public comments who would like to, let's record, seeing as there are none, I will bring it back to the board. Are you guys sure that you don't have any questions or comments? Okay.
Motion, I make a motion to approve.
I have a motion from Langello.
My second.
From Boyd. Both said at the same time, sorry. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion carries. Number 11 on our agenda this evening. Project number 2023100026, quasi-judicial requiring dis- requiring disclosure, board members, anything to disclose?
Not much to add here with this, uh, same changes as the, as the prior one, this is not currently platted, but is advancing forward, we have had a preliminary plat approval on this, and this does have the, uh, only change that's being made is to the lot coverage, that removing that lot coverage and retaining the 70% impervious. With that, I'll close, wait any questions or comments, thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Board members, are there any questions for staff? Would the applicant like to come up and present? Is there any public comment that would like to be made? Yeah, I'll close public comment, bring it back to the board. If there's nothing left for staff?
I will make a motion to approve.
One motion by Langello, second by Langello, moving with a vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion carries. Staff, do you have any comments for us?
No, you've heard enough, thank you.
You're not staff.
We have a regular meetings next month, and, and, uh, a regular meeting next month, and then in January, a regular meeting, correct?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And as we're sitting now, we will have, uh, Gina, we have items, don't we, forthcoming, potentially to the December? I think we, we, yes. We may, we'll stand by, because we, one, one, just for the benefit of any public that may be tuning in, uh, we still have outstanding, if you recall, from the previous agenda, uh, those two, future land use and the rezoning, uh, may come forward. Uh, at this point, uh, the request was not to complete the public notice that we had discussed, uh, previously. And so that may come forward in December. We also may have, uh, uh, PUD and potentially preliminary plat coming forward. So we'll, we'll, yes.
Also, uh, we did get some guidance from the County Commission on the intent of that comprehensive land language on the Barrier Island about areas of native vegetation. So I'm not, I'm not prepared tonight to explain it, but, uh, we'll, uh, maybe build that into a future meeting.
Okay. Thank you, staff. Board comments? You've already had your turn.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, public comments, anything? Public comments that is not on this agenda? Not on the agenda? Or whatever you wanna say?
Okay, Elizabeth Fox, one eight seven Carter Trail. I did have a question. Um, now that we understand you guys don't fully approve, and it goes somewhere next month, are the Flagler County residents of Durance going to be notified? Because we were not at this meeting, they won't, so, okay. That's all I wanted to know.
And is that because that's Orman Beach, Volusia County, or?
Because our, our, our requirement is a three-hundred-foot radius from the property. And so we, we don't inform those who are outside of the radius. By, by law, that's our, our notice.
You can contact them and ask them.
Right.
Public information, and they will tell you.
Every Friday, okay. Okay, thank you very much.
As of now, it would be, uh, December eighteenth at five thirty PM.
Uh, Kelsey Pardini, one ninety-three Carter Trail. I just had a question as well. For the stormwater, uh, drainage plan that they're gonna propose, is, is that supposed to go back before this committee to review, before it goes to the County Commissioners to be approved? Or what's the process for that exactly?
Well, we, we are now talking about an application, so we're, we're not talking generally.
We're not taking any more public, I was saying.
We close that out. But I, I can, I can answer, uh, the, the specific stormwater plan for that development will come forward as part of the plat submittal.
Okay, so it will come before this committee to review?
Before the planning and development.
And does anybody from the county actually look at that?
We do.
Which department looks at that exactly?
Growth Management Department, Development Engineering.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any more public comment? Turn.
Second.
Thank you, this evening, for everybody's participation.
Have a great, safe, thankful Thanksgiving.
Yes, you too.
Thank you.